Forming our team.
Yes, so that we can get an application and figure out a background check.
And last. Tell her the background check.
Oh, no. Oh, my goodness. Okay. One minute. That made me nervous. I'm shut.
So you have questions? That was the only question.
You did the low one.
Oh, yeah. I had to move around. That's low one.
I do very sound.
Yeah, it would be said even when you're like a little kid. It's like how much you close them.
I'm sure it didn't hurt. So I'll have her walks her pillow.
Right.
No, but then your knees.
Exactly.
There's one.
I worked last year.
Recording in progress.
I'll do order the regular meeting of the Rialto City Council. Um, we have nothing to report out of closed sessions. Roll call please.
Mayor Garms.
Here.
Commissioner Tim Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Orr.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
Please stand and look at me. I pledge allegiance to the flag and states of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph and Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration of the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of urgency nature, requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Any emails? Then I will close public comment and move to the consent calendar. Is there any item that council would like to remove from the consent calendar?
There is.
Anyone like to remove anything to the consent calendar? Any? Okay, then is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries five zero. Staff reports and communications, page thirty two in our packets, city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garms and members of the council. So, um, so the United States Department of Agriculture has released its one-page information sheet. Uh, that includes grant and loan opportunities for the victims of the twenty twenty-two Farnell earthquake, which supports, uh, uh, mostly impacted residents of Rialto. Um, I neglected to attach it to your packet for this evening, but there should be a little handout for each of the council members, uh, for you to look at. Um, this will be going out in our next newsletter and then also county emergency services that will also be distributing, uh, this flyer. Um, there's, uh, and also the disaster case managers have also been, uh, informed of this flyer. So this is an important, uh, new piece of the disaster recovery framework.
City manager, just to, just on this, I also gave it to Sarah Rebeck, at the community resources center and asked her if she spurs it out.
Okay. Great, so it includes the both grant and loans. My understanding is that some of the, uh, issues that people were facing in terms of not being able to retroactively, uh, access funds for projects already completed, um, that may on a case-by-case basis, uh, also be, uh, eligible for this funding, as well as potentially concrete for your foundation work and whatnot, that a lot of people running into problems with in terms of access in the earthquake, brace and bowl program. And again, these are our funds that are accessible not just to residents of Rialto, but that the earthquake did impact, uh, folks, uh, up and down the Eel River Valley.
No, no, just to add on that, sorry, with the thing of it. It is, um, you can have the work done already. It is, it, it will reverse you. It isn't, uh, a lot of the things you have to have there, go ahead before you actually do the work. In this one, your work can be completed as long as you have received and food and maybe if you are awarded the grant, you can still be awarded the grant. If you're eligible.
And then staff has also been working with PHD to coalesce a list of, uh, uh, project study reports, uh, for future road projects, including, uh, Second Avenue, Old Avenue and whatnot.
Right.
Um, that hopefully would speed up the, uh, process of grant applications down the road for various funding sources, primarily through Gage Park, but potentially through others. So that's, uh, that's exciting news. Uh, and an item will be eventually coming to the council for approval of the budget amendment to move that work forward. Uh, also not in, um, your, written on your staff for, um, uh, but important to note, uh, the, uh, nuisance advisory committee on the fifteenth, uh, will be, um, considering and reviewing, a rental housing inspection ordinance. So the nuisance advisory committee has been working, uh, over the past few months on a rental housing inspection, uh, proposal, uh, in ordinance language. Uh, that material has gone on to the city attorney for cursory review. Uh, and then it will also schedule, it's also scheduled to go to the planning commission on the, on, uh, the twenty-eighth of this month. Uh, so depending on the outcome of these, uh, interactions with the committees and the commission, uh, we expect to have a, uh, informational presentation for the council, uh, on December fifth of this year. Uh, and then potentially, uh, draft ordinance language for the council to consider adopting sometime in January of this year. Um, so, um, that's something just to keep on the radar, uh, as we move forward. Other than that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that the council, uh, may have, uh, myself or South. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Tim.
Uh, no questions. I do always miss our police department report, though. You got anything good for us?
Well, my apologies, because I've got the consent button. I have it right here. Um, we've been experiencing, uh, a lot of private things in the last couple of weeks. And so someone was starting an investigation into those, but we pretty busy that last week.
Sorry to hear that, but I'm also glad that we have good police officers. Thank you. It's okay that you didn't hit send. I'll forgive you.
Appreciate it.
That's it for now, for me.
Just, uh, on the, the, one of the things you're doing for the, the, uh, ordinance for rounds. Are you going to go and explain how that works? But when you first have that on, okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll try to give, uh, a rounded, uh, full informational presentation on to the council, just informational, then get the ability to get feedback from the council on that before the final, uh, first reading, uh, would be submitted pending, um, the recommendation of the nuisance advisory committee and planning commission. On this. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, Chief, could you maybe, um, make a copy and put it in our boxes?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Um, and then that's all. Are there any questions from the public? Any email? Thank you, um, city staff, all of you. Outstanding job and we appreciate you all very much. Authorized, um, starting call items. Number one, authorize staff to rebid the gateway project, page thirty-seven in our packets. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garms, members of the council. So I just want to make sure this is a discussion. I haven't allowed the opportunity for council members to provide input if there is any. Um, in our discussions with, uh, the, uh, staff of the Clean California, uh, grant program, um, they had some concerns with the, uh, bid, um, numbers submitted. They're not, um, uh, uh, they were a little high in certain categories, so. But, uh, they, they thought it would be advisable to go ahead and rebid the project, um, to see, uh, again, if we could maybe make some minor modifications to the bidding documents to get, uh, uh, to get, uh, more contractors bidding on the project. As you may recall, um, we ended up with only one, uh, one bid, uh, in that process, at the end of that process. Um, so, uh, just other updates on that, um, is that, and I would just add, uh, to that, um, we are looking at the timeline and, and working with, uh, Clean California, uh, in terms of, you know, adjusting timelines. And I think this, you know, potentially helps build a case with, uh, with the state as to future timeline adjustments, um, or potentially scope adjust. Though. Um, but in terms of some of the other items, uh, on, uh, uh, towards the bottom of page thirty-seven, um, we did receive a five thousand dollar grant from Pacific Gas and Electric towards the project. And then unfortunately, uh, we did not receive the, uh, uh, grant from Coast Central Credit Union. We appreciate the opportunity from them, uh, to submit the grant. Um, and I know that they looked at it, uh, very seriously, um, but there's obviously, what they reported back is, uh, record requests for, um, charitable donations, probably over one point five million dollars for approval. And I, I, I want to say it's about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars they have. Uh, so obviously the requests far, far outstrip, um, their, uh, program, programmatic funding. Um, so with that, um, the, uh, the bid would largely remain the same, just some minor modifications to the due dates, uh, for, for certain, um, uh, requirements in the bid package.
Thank you. Okay. No questions. No questions. I hope it's best on that one. Councilmember.
Is we, uh, is there anyone on this?
Uh, for this specific one, uh, the funds have to be, the project has to be, uh, delivered by June thirty of twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, okay.
Um, it's possible to get an extension, um, uh, so we'll, we'll see, but that's why we're working so closely with Clean California and, and taking their advice and, and direction in terms of, uh, how to move the project forward.
They, they didn't have any feedback on, they, what inflation has done to this, this type of festival and fuel and.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think our bid was that off, uh, from, from what their estimates were. But certainly there are some minor, uh, changes that I think could encourage others to, to bid on, on the project. Namely, the timeline for project delivery. Uh, we kind of yoke that time back quite a bit. Um, so, uh, in the bid package, and so, uh, we have more time to afford the, the contractors to do the work.
But our total amount of money includes the exercise stations as well, correct? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and just, uh, so everyone knows and doesn't want to feel bad about Coast Central, they did award a grant, the fire district for playground equipment, so. They are, they did actually give money to the city of Rialto to help us with something. So we appreciate that. Uh, okay, are there any questions from the public? Any? Uh, there, um, uh, I'm sorry. Is, um, their motion to authorize staff to rebid the project? I just don't know. And the motion's second? Motion carries five zero. And we come to our final discussion and possible action on the dog park. Our, gee, I wasn't familiar with official sentence, authorized to issue an amended, did bid related to the Rialto dog park, page thirty-eight in our package, city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garms. So, uh, this is another, uh, project where we have a kind of very specific scope of, for available dollars, uh, to deliver the project. It's a little shy of, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, uh, to deliver, uh, the project. And, uh, we, uh, at this point, based on the original bid results that came back somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, we worked with the ad hoc committee to strip back, uh, the project, which was both a dog park and a half basketball court. Uh, even stripping everything away from the project and just focusing on the bare bones. The end result with the contractors' bids was, was about four hundred thousand dollars to accomplish both. So we basically have, uh, only enough money to, uh, accomplish half of, 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 uh, what we were hoping to be able to do. Um, given the earthquake and the, uh, you know, financial situation being, uh, slightly murky, uh, as a result of, of, uh, of that event and our pullout of that event. Um, staff is recommending that we focus these dollars, uh, basically on the dog park component, while still leaving, uh, space available, uh, for future implementation of the half court, um, at the site. So basically it would be, um, uh, the dog park components, fencing, um, walkways, uh, parking, kind of a, a more of a phased implementation of the, of the total, uh, project. And then depending on future grant possibilities or the city's, uh, financial position, as it, as it becomes clearer, uh, we might be able to implement the, the half court. So it's disappointing, but that, um, at this point, uh, we have a number of projects in the queue, um, that we're probably going to encounter some, some similar turbulence in terms of just the cost for exceeding the original engineer's estimate and, um, and what we were hoping to deliver. And, uh, in this particular case, I still think we can pull off, uh, a decent, uh, project, but just not exactly what we were kind of hoping to do. Uh, so that's just the, the basics of it. Essentially, we're taking kind of a Cadillac version of what we had hoped for and really, uh, stripping off all the extras and, uh, really just focusing on that, uh, dog park, which again would be a great, uh, point for, uh, us to be able to distribute animal control information, help organize pet owners in the community, uh, and, uh, and whatnot. So, um, so I don't have much more to add to that unless Kevin on, uh, online has, has something to add, but, uh, uh, happy to answer any questions if it comes to.
City manager, Councilmember Wilson?
Um, well, I don't, I, I, I like what you wanted to do, just, I was talking to the dog park to begin with. Yeah, so there's, there's no way that you can. I guess you're going to figure out, you know, I guess, but offenses have a dog. You know, there's no way the city can do parts of this in pieces.
Yeah, so I, I mean, start with gravel parking lot, instead of fade parking lot or. Yeah, I think, I think, uh, part of this particular bid package, um, will have more of an ability to kind of pick and choose the items that the contractor bids on. Uh, so the parking lot and portion of it is, uh, something that would be added, so we could take that portion out. But there will have to be some level of cement work. And so, like, if you have all that equipment mobilized to come out and do, uh, ADA and that sort of thing, kind of makes sense to expand that while you have the crew out there. But we'll have to look at the, uh, um, let the bids come back in terms of exactly what the final scope of, of what we can pull off, that there would be. But already, you know, South is, uh, going to be doing the water connection. Uh, we think we can do that for, uh, uh, just through Forest Account, um, and, uh, and other items that we may identify in the future. Thank you.
No more? No, no questions. No questions? I have no buttons. Any buttons? Any questions? Yeah, then, um, is there a motion to, uh, authorize the city manager to amend the bid? It's been postponed. We have a motion in the second?
Second.
You have a motion in the second? Motion carries five zero.
Uh, Mayor Garms, for the, the council reports, you might want to, uh, bring up the subject of the, of our council meeting on.
Yeah. I know, yeah, I have it ready. Thank you.
Council reports? Okay. Let's see, it went to a reading meeting on October twenty-third. We heard from the Redwood Region Rise, which I feel like I finally got a slightly more understanding of what that is, but then I called something else and I forgot what. So that was interesting. Um, we at least did, I think Greg Foster and I both kind of spoke up on behalf of the city of Rialto and the county in general, as far as infrastructure needs go. And sometimes money doesn't need to go to things you can see. Sometimes it really needs to go to the things that are under the ground. So I was happy to at least have some support in getting that out there when people are asking, where would we put my? Um, so there's that. Let's see. Um, then we are having an emergency preparedness fair this Saturday at the community resource center. That's November eleventh from one to three. It is just in an effort to make anyone in the community feel like they've got a better idea of maybe what they can do in advance of a disaster, in the moment of disaster, and right following a disaster. So I will be there. Um, yeah, so that's going to be good. Uh, I'm going to a school board meeting this Thursday, November ninth. Yeah, have my page always come with me. Um, we have a nuisance committee meeting that has been moved, am I wrong? To November fifteenth at three P M. Yes, I've got it. Um, our beautification and walkability committee is going to meet Thursday, November sixteenth at four P M. Correct? Right. And I missed the chamber meeting, but it's probably Christmas time. So if anybody in the next few weeks on Saturday sees the chamber commerce up decorating the trees, if you want to pull over and stop and give you advice, they will take it. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall? She covered that.
Chocolate tree was.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Chocolate tree was.
The resource center did a wonderful job. And what was nice about it is it was a real community feel. There were lots of the community there and it wasn't just going around and getting candy. They were visiting and.
Yes, wonderful.
And we covered all our committees and, uh, just wanted to thank our public works for all the work they've done in this last week. They've done a good job and I think that's it. I have one question, though. I don't know if now is the appropriate time to ask it. Um, coming over Kainer Bridge at this end, right where you get off the bridge, the sidewalk is awful.
Yeah.
And that was.
Oh, yeah.
Offset, yeah. Um, is that, is that Caltrans or is that a?
So that section of sidewalk is, is scheduled as part of our, our stip on the sidewalk improvement. as part of our, our step on the sidewalk improvement, uh, plan.
Yeah.
So there will also be a crosswalk added to that intersection over to, uh, Ireland Street. If we're, we're on, you said painter street, right?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so there would be a crosswalk added at that location, and that sidewalk is going to be replaced using.
Is there something we can put there now? I mean, somebody can just cut it across the bridge at night as that. Like, I, I don't know if somebody can kind of block that so that somebody doesn't step down there.
Yeah. Um, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. Okay. Nothing else. Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
Uh, Thanksgiving weekend and the Christmas weekend, the R C E A moved their meetings. Normally, the fourth Thursday, they moved it to the third, Thursday of July or, um, November and December, those two meetings. Yeah, that is W N A directly. But they're not, not going on it. It's W N A. Our T D A has got another issue. That's all I have to say from the beginning.
Thank you. Councilwoman Orr?
Um, H C O meeting from last night, they, or last night, last month. Um, two big topics they were covering were both related to transit. Um, they have, they're really pushing their chip pay now on the transit system where if you, as long as you use the same card with the same chip, it automatically calculates your daily, weekly, monthly rates. Um, you don't have to buy a pass card anymore to do that. And the other one is they're doing a trial on dial rides, something close to Uber and Lyft, uh, with the transit system, uh, where if you call, they will pick you up and take you to your location. Right now, it's primarily for elderly and those in need. Uh, but they're branching it out, trying to see how it works for smaller cars.
That is, okay, thank you. And I'm going to tag on to what you were just talking about because the H T A meeting was basically, they were, um, um, updating us on all, on the projects that are in the works. But the one big thing is October first, the microtransit actually kicked in to gear. And, um, so you, there's a Ride Humbled app that you can get. You can sign up for the dial rides. Um, you still have to go to the, it's not at your door. There's, uh, bus stops that you have to go to, but then it is, um, a more direct route. It isn't stop by stop by stop. And, um, it's Samoa. Eureka has, I think, two or three different lines. Samoa has one. Arcata has, I think, two. And then it goes to McKinleyville, if my memory serves. I, I forgot to bring a newspaper with me. But anyway, it started, um, October first. They're really, really helping people get onto it. Um, it is beta, so there's, you know, going to be some hiccups, but they are doing their best to make it smooth. And if you get the Ride Humbled app, then that will actually help the rider, um, greatly and make it smoother for them. And there is a hiccup in the app. If you just go through that first part, where it's asking you to say okay to something, you know, just say okay, and you have to do it twice. Um, and after you pass that, it's actually a pretty smooth app. So that was H T A, and I think that's all. Yeah. Okay. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Is motion second?
Just, uh, you said something about this, what's going to happen?
Oh, thank you, Frank. That's right, I told you. So, yeah, I told you, I wrote it down. Okay, um, we will, um, adjourn until Tuesday, November twenty-first at six P M. And that will be our next meeting in two weeks. Two weeks from today, twenty-first. Okay, six P M. Thank you, Frank. Okay, now, getting adjourned. What is it? I was just like speaking at it. It's something he's worked. Yeah.